Hello, it is now 6:00 PM and this is the June 1st special council meeting and let's, let's bring it to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Right quick, I want to do a sound check for Vice Mayor Gunn. Can you hear me?
I have you loud and clear. How am I?
Wow, this is incredible. This is going to be our best remote meeting ever. Nice job, everyone. Great job. All right, Patty, will you please call the roll? Here.
Here.
Present.
Here. Thank you, Patty. We only have one item on the agenda and that's all we can have on a special council meeting. Today, we are here to accept or reject the 12th and 13th Street Drainage Modification Bid Number 22-01. This meeting was called because the bid expires on June the 4th and the next regular meeting is on June the 6th. Before we continue, may I have a motion? Motion by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Nataro. All right, Mr. Banker, do you have the floor?
This is an ongoing problem on 12th and 13th, 13th Street. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last work session. I apologize. So I didn't hear a lot from what the engineer was saying. But some of these costs, I do have a problem with from the first bid to the second. And I also have a problem with if needed line items. Who's going to like check these if needed light items? Do we have an independent inspector? As you're talking about $80,000.
Yeah, the engineer, that's part of his requirement is part of the project.
And the only, the big thing I see here is the mobilization. It went up $25,000.
Didn't go up. That was the low bidder's mobilization cost.
Okay, so I'm getting two different.
Yeah.
I thought this was, I thought this was the increased charges from.
No, 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 no. What you've got there is the first thing is from, excuse me, from KNR.
Okay.
And that's their bid with their total base bid. And then the second one is from the next bidder, which was MTM, MTM, and their gross bid was 821,000. So you've got both bid tabulations from both of them.
I have one at 652 and one at 747.
Right. Those are the base bids and then the other options are the contingency. That's the 10% contingency for, that we typically put in every bid if there's an overage or something.
And while you're interjecting here, what I heard at the work session, there's two compressions in that pipe right now and that.
Right.
Okay, so we ever get a cost to remove the compressions only?
No, we did not. We got what the engineer told us and he said it could any range from 40 to $60,000 depending.
And my last question is when would they start this project?
If, if they would start it relatively quickly, I mean, we'd give them a notice to proceed and they have X amount of days to complete it. That's in the bid document.
And my final question would be, is that going to, we just started the hurricane season ripping up that road, ripping up that pipe. Is that going to have? What are they doing? I guess with the question is what will we be doing to prepare drainage as a removing pipe? Because lots of times you remove it from one side of the street, the other side.
Right.
I just don't want to see, I hate to see these projects start in June rather than starting right, January.
Right. Well, I, I mean, we've done several of the projects. Some of them have been in the summer. Some of them haven't. We've just adjusted and they've taken care of the drainage. So we haven't had an issue with some backup. Typically, what they do is they excavate and replace the pipe at a time and just keep going.
Is it anyone else? Nope. Mr. Gunn.
I think I expressed my opinions at the work session. I, I'm kind of uncomfortable with this huge price increase on this thing. I've read through the stormwater study. I pulled it up and took a look at it and it seems to me a lot of it is based on simulations and computer analysis of elevations and that sort of thing. I'm stuck on the fact that we're doing nothing to fix the constraint. We're widening pipes within the street, but the outfalls are the constraint. So we can, we can put in larger pipes in the street, but we're still trying to eject the water through the outfalls through basically a straw. And I have a concern about that. I, I think there are some things that must be addressed right now. And if you take a look at some of the recommendations in the report, it talks about that. The, the, the actual drainage grades, as the city managers talked about it, there are some depressions in the ground that are obvious problems that need to be fixed right now. But overall, I think we may need to go back and take a really good look at this thing and maybe be a little more surgically precise in what issues we want to fix. Rather than just, the recommendation was just to fix all these things, not necessarily based on data that there's a problem right there, but just to overall, we're going to increase the size of this pipe while we still have these constraints. So I'm kind of tossed on this and I'm inclined to fix some of the obvious things that we can't fix and we know are successful inputs, but so far as just wholesale go with this contract, I'm kind of opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves, I looked this plan over and correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like one of the pipes going to the intercoastal is, would be new. Is that correct? The one on 12th Street?
No, it wouldn't be.
It is not.
No, we don't have any easement or access to put that out.
Either one of them.
No.
Okay. For some reason, whenever I was looking at it, it appeared that one pipe was larger than the other.
We did approach the county about dumping into their stormwater pond, but they denied us to do that.
All right. And then the, the pipe joining the two, that one would be enlarged?
Yes.
Okay, all right. How much did we invest on this study?
The study, I wasn't able to find that because that was prior to my time and unfortunately, the, the accountant wasn't here today that they could go back and do some more research for it because she's sick. But we did spend 30 plus thousand on the design already. And I'm guessing, I'm just giving you a guess number, but it was probably in the $30,000 range for the study.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Any other council members have a question?
Well, you brought up, go ahead. So I think a good assumption would be if we ask the current engineering firm to redesign based on new information that we would ask the city to take a look at, for example, if we only wanted to repair the pipes that were currently failing at the junctions and not replace any of the current pipes that are out there. Because my take on it was, as we discussed in the workshop, step one is to completely video all the pipes, all the reinforced concrete pipes, in my opinion, just to make sure that they are in need of replacement. I've seen mixed studies out there, analysis, the Army Corps of Engineers says that a lot of the reinforced concrete pipes will last up to 125 years to 150 years. Ours are currently 70 years. So we do have a failure or two there, but it's not because the pipe failed. It's because the joint failed. And that's a construction issue. When they were joining the pipes together, whoever did that work, I would have to guess maybe didn't do it 100% correctly, then that area failed, then the water comes in and erodes the base underneath it. That sinks, the road sinks and therefore lies the problem. So if we, if we, not probably, we would definitely have to fix that pipe. But the other pipes, if they look sound and solid, my recommendation would be at this time, based on data that's out there. I don't think we would necessarily have to replace all of those current pipes, which would save a considerable amount of money. So that's why I'm concerned about moving forward with the contract at this point.
Did you say moving forward with the contract?
I'm concerned about doing it. So I'm not in favor of moving forward.
Mike Sable.
No, I definitely agree with all that. I would really like to go back and perhaps look at a re-scope of the project that we really do target, what has to be done. Vice, a kind of a comprehensive bid as it was proposed.
Anyone else? Leslie?
I am in favor of going forward with it now. We still got, we've had the flooding for a long time. We need to fix it. We've, you know, hired capable engineers to do it. We've got these bids from good engineering firms. And it's not going to get any cheaper and it's going to keep flooding if we don't address it and sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, what do you recommend, Lynn?
Well, I, we've expended funds already on this project. What I would recommend is the, the $200,000 overage. We've got the American Rescue money. It's not really coming out of our budget. It's, it's a gift, I'll say, from the government. And we plan to use it for stormwater. I think the people on the street expect the project to be done. Now, if you want to change the scope for the next street down the road, I, I would agree with that, but at this point, it was designed, we paid money for the design and it was a recommendation of the stormwater study that was done several years ago. I'll admit that. But if you want to change the scope long term, then I would say do this project and go on. And if you want to adjust the future projects, then start that process at that point.
I agree with you. I, I believe that the residents on 12th and 13th are expecting something. They've been waiting a long time and in my opinion, it's time to move forward on this project. One of the things that I committed to was doing everything I could for storm drainage and is there a better way? There may, there may very well be. However, I'm worried about paralysis through analysis. Where we never move on this project and we have some very angry residents by the time, by the time we're finished having this discussion. So right now I am leaning towards moving forward on this project. But I would, I would be very interested in hearing from the citizens. Yes, Mr. Hansick?
John Hansick, 22nd Street. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I hope I get this done in three minutes, but the bottom line is this. I cannot find the words to convince you or urge you to approve this contract as it is now. 12th and 13th Street, completing it would probably finish half of the upgrades and replacement of the storm system in the city that we're responsible for. Okay. The, yesterday I received from the city clerk, the report that was commissioned in 2016, I took the time to read it. It said that back then, six years ago, the system was too small and obsolete. We've also heard it's sleeving is a Band-Aid. Eventually, you're going to have to replace the pipe. I understand what you're saying about fixing issues, but as the city manager just indicated, you've got this 800 plus thousand dollar gift from the American Rescue Plan. The advisory committee recommended that all of it go towards stormwater. And everything that I've heard so far is go forward with this project as it is now. If you want to readjust, reevaluate how much you do in the out years, that's okay. But you're, you're on the verge of, and here's another thing to think about. Material and labor is not going to get cheaper and I want to give you a quick example. I'm running for a national office in a fraternal organization. I'm traveling the country. I've been on the internet to buy airline tickets for my travels. So I get my outbound flight and my return flight and I scroll down to pay for it. And by the time I hit checkout, pay, prices up anywhere from 50 to $75. I just filled up my truck. It's 25 cents more than it was yesterday. Things are not getting cheaper. So again, I urge you to approve this contract and move forward with it. If you want to adjust things downstream for the rain streets, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens? No. Let's go back to the council.
I think city manager recommends it. Our mayor has recommended it. I know there's a couple of people in council that has questions, but I think we should do it.
Yes, sir.
The, the problem is I specifically contacted the engineering firm responsible for this project and I had a couple of questions for them. The first one was, if we go ahead and do this work, will we see a difference in the current flooding scenarios that we're seeing today? And the answer was no. For example, if we have a high tide and a large rain event, the work that's going to be done is not going to help prevent the water that we're currently seeing forming in the streets on 12th and 13th Street. And so that's my biggest concern. I know there were comments made about, you know, the citizens who live on 12th and 13th Street might be upset if we don't do this and we see problems. I think they're going to be more upset when they find out we spent $750,000. And the same problems that they've seen previously, they will see today. That is a problem. That's why I want to review it and determine exactly what needs to be done so that we don't spend any more money than we have to and go ahead and take care of what needs to be taken care of. Because really, the only problem could potentially be is if the reinforced concrete pipe that's currently installed is failing. And then we have major problems from that. But until we can determine that by videoing, videoing all of those pipes that are currently there, the city has already done some pretty cool things by putting the check valves on the end of the outfall pipes, which has prevented, I talked to citizens on those streets. It was kind of interesting because their take on it was, hey, Mr. Roberts, that's great. You guys already took care of, of changing out the pipes. I said, well, actually, we haven't yet. That's what we're getting ready to do potentially. But they had seen improvements with the check valve. Because what that did was when the high tide came up and some of the citizens have experienced water backflowing from the intercoastal up through those outfall pipes onto the street. That pretty much has gone away because of what the city currently did, which is wonderful. But, but spending this amount of money and not actually causing a difference, that's a problem, I think, of use of our funds.
Other council members? Vice Mayor Gunn.
I agree with Lloyd. I think moving forward on this thing is smart, but I think we need to re-scope the project and address those issues that we know will provide positive results while we investigate the others such as scoping the, the lines and the pipes. We have never objectively evaluated the results we got from the previous projects. We have a lot of anecdotal analysis floating around, yeah, it's better, no, it's worse. Some people are complaining, well, you spent a lot of tax money and we haven't seen any changes. It's somewhere in between, but the bottom line is we have never objectively evaluated the results from what we, we worked on before. Yeah, we spent money on a report that sunk cost off. Don't go chasing money you've already spent with an improper decision. That's sunk cost and sometimes that can be a bad management decision. So far as spending rescue money, I agree. Let's spend rescue, the rescue money on stormwater, but let's do it smartly. Let's not just buy cat food because the price is right right now and the price of cat food is going to go up even though you don't own a cat. So my, my point is I agree with spending rescue money on stormwater, but let's do it smart. Let's move forward, but let's re-scope the project and get those things. We're going to get the biggest bang out of it that we know will yield positive results while we figure out a way to objectively evaluate whether or not we get better with these projects. We haven't, we haven't attained that yet. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves, I have another question. Are the streets, they're recessing in places? Is that correct?
Yes, this is one of our, one of our not great streets.
Okay, and is that from the valley curves? Is that from the pipe sinking?
Yes, in part of it. It's probably because there's a seal break or whatever, but until you excavate that, if I went out and said to, I'll just say to a contractor, I need you to excavate this road and make a repair. He could say, yeah, I'll excavate it, but it could be 40, $60,000. And once he gets in there, because he doesn't really know, we can, you know, we've got some camera scoping of the pipes. The majority of it's the outfall stuff. And, you know, they're, the cameras are, it's, some of it's pretty rough shape internally. Even the concrete company says 70 to 100 years. I've heard the story about, you know, like Lloyd said, it's, it's 70 to 100 years. Well, we're at 70 plus years on these pipes already. So they're at their, what I want to call it, the end of their useful life. You know, you're two thirds of the way gone if you use 100. You know, you're already two thirds of the way gone. And we're not trying to prevent all flooding. What we're trying to do is gain some capacity. We stop the backflow of coming into the streets from high tide and that's what the goal was. We live on an island. It was never to prevent all the flooding. But if you go through the projects first through seventh, eighth, it has improved periodically from, from prior, before we had the backflow and new drainage system and we had some storage capacity. And we put ourselves onto, in some cases where there's a park, we could build a bigger outfall. But unfortunately, when you get to the, to the residential areas where there's no park, like here, 12th and 13th, there's no way to change that capacity unless you want to go dig up the yards between the houses, which probably could cost well over a quarter million dollars just for those two pipes. Because you could damage the homes that are next to them and they're very narrow, you know, the space. So like I said, my, my suggestion is we've expended the money and we've got the design. If the council decides they don't want to do it, that's the council's decision, but the fact of the matter is it'll be probably, you're going to have to redesign the project. We're going to have to go back to the engineering firm and say, hey, we want to do something different. It's going to cost you X amount of dollars. We'll, we'll do some more cammering, I'm, I'm sure. But in the end result, is it going to save any money? You know, if you had to just dig up the one pipe, that, the, the big cost here is the 18 inch pipe because we've got 1,000 feet of it. But if you just had to dig up that one pipe and it cost you $40,000, you've already spent the 40 you could replace the pipe with. You know, and you didn't replace anything. I, I mean, we have pretty good videos of the outfalls over there. And, you know, that we've had them ground, the internal, you know, clean the oysters and stuff out. So like I said, my suggestion, if you want to change to the future, that's, I wouldn't have any problem with that, but I think you've already expended a, a good amount of time and, and the engineer did tell me, you know, that, yeah, there is a range of 70 to 100 years, but you've started the last 30 years of it.
So what happens if the pipe fails between the homes?
The only thing you could do with that, you'd have to slip line it. That's why we try to keep them as clean as possible, get the oysters out of them. And that's why we do that.
But we, with those pipes, we don't have the problem of sinking streets and
No.
constant puddling where it's
We've had a few places, Kyle Donato, right? Yeah, we've had a few places where we've had to go in because of the pipes are between the houses where we've had a little bit of failure, but predominantly the failures in the streets and that's probably because of the traffic.
Because the traffic and the big trucks going up and down the street.
Things of that nature. We've slip lined those pipes and they're fine, but slip lining is expensive. If you just want to slip line these pipes, you're talking double the price.
How far from the city pipe to the residential pipe are we talking about to the discharge? How many feet?
I'd have to look at the plan, but the discharge, the, the one off of 12th Street, the discharge is, is significant because it's between those two big houses and there's a lot of property there. The one on 13th Street is much shorter.
More than 100 feet?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Have we looked into directional boring?
Well, that's what you do slip line, you wouldn't directional bore it.
Well, you'd put a whole new pipe in if you did that.
If we're going to, I was listening to the vice mayor and he's talking about having the ability to objectively evaluate. And my big fear right now, I mean, I've been reviewing this, is we may be in kind of an, an overall just paralysis by analysis. Is if we go ahead with this project, do we have enough points, data points that we can objectively evaluate how this performed going forward?
How, how all of the projects?
No, how this specific project, if we approve it and it goes forward upon accomplishing the project, do we have enough data points to say, yes, we were successful in doing the following on this street?
Well, I think you would, the, the, the really evaluation would have to come from the water that's drained and how fast it gets out. And, you know, the type of storm it was, is an example.
Okay, because going, going to the future, it's like we heard the term objectively evaluate, but we don't even have that criteria. I'm just trying to get a set of criteria. Like say, if we go forward, would, I would like to use the criteria now. Well, we, we could ask the engineering firm to develop something that, that the council would feel comfortable with. But what I'm mainly saying is you want to evaluate the pipes going north. All of you saw the stormwater plan. I believe it's page 70 something. Vice Mayor and I did talk about it, but in the stormwater plan, 12th and 13th Street have a high degree of water in the modeling. Okay, there's another area that we had a pretty good size degree of modeling down at Hibiscus and Bell Isle, which prevented people from getting out of the street. So we fixed that. Doing the same thing we're doing here. You know, if you spoke to the residents on most of the south streets with the check valves and the, the rainfall, for the most part, it gets out. We have a, you know, where Mr. Banker lives. We have a, you know, where Mr. Banker lives, I lived right next door to him for twenty-three years, so the water is definitely lower than it was twenty years ago, but it's
I, I, I would debate you on that, but, because you moved out right after the project was done.
No, it was done. Yeah, I don't know, but anyway, it, you know, it's, it's just going to be, i- if there's some more analysis that we need to do, then data points that the council wants us to ask for, then, you know, we can talk to the engineer about that and figure out some way to analyze it. But I do know that residents on the street over there, and they've even told Councilmember Roberts that, it's better than it was. And the rainfall, what, three weeks ago when it came down, I did go to that street, and there wasn't much on it, you know?
But they have a higher check valve
That's right.
than Seventh and Eighth Streets.
Right.
Yeah, which makes
A whole big difference. Yeah, and that's part of the issue, too.
Any other council members? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Reeves, when you were talking about, when I just glanced at this project, not glanced, when I studied this project, it looks like to me currently, there's only one pipe that definitely needs to be replaced. That's the one kind of at the corner of Thirteenth, right there where that settlement area is, where there's a joint problem. So effectively, if we only did that pipe right there from corner to corner, I don't know, that's about twenty feet, and it's about a hundred and ten dollars a linear foot, so you're talking about three thousand dollars, plus some of the base work to be done there. So you, I heard you say something about forty thousand, so
Well, that's the, the estimate I asked the engineer about. If, if you're excavating to get it done, let's say tomorrow it fails.
Right.
We'd, we'd have to go get somebody to excavate it immediately. Well, it's not going to be three or four thousand dollars.
No, but that takes into account mobilization, all those other fees that the city's going to have to incorporate. So, if we modified this particular plan and, and basically said, we're not doing the rest of the other pipes, because we think after videoing those pipes, they're in good condition and will last significantly longer, then we're only, you know, it's, we're basically reducing it by, just in the pipe itself, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, that, that's pretty significant from, from our revenue, I believe, if we don't have to do it at this time. Now, one of the issues the engineer had was, well, if we have to go back in, let's say in five years, then the asphalt work that we did, now we're going to be tearing that up, but he says, basically, that's about a fifteen-year redo anyway. So if the pipe lasts another fifteen years, then we would get it on the next go-around. And who knows what, I mean, I wish I had a magic ball that's going to tell me what the prices of things are going to be. I know everybody says it's going to go up, up, up. We all saw wood, for example, when the COVID craziness hit, and the price of plywood went up to here, and now it's not there anymore. It actually came down. So prices of some things did go down. We don't know for sure what's going to happen. But again, my whole fear at this point is, we don't maybe have to do it at this point. We don't know until we take a, a video of the pipes to see what the condition is. And if it shows that they're in pretty good condition, then I would definitely recommend that we don't do it at, at this time. We just go ahead and do that one pipe that's required to be repaired, plus, of course, all the other work that's going to help Twelfth and Thirteenth Street. The, the gutters and the, and the milling and the new asphalt that's going to go down. But the only place we would remove and replace pipe would be at that one location where we know there's a problem.
Mr. Reeves, are there other locations where the street is recessed beyond the, the, the particular spot he's talking about?
I, I know there are, but I can't say to you specifically where.
On Twelfth and Thirteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've driven Twelfth and Thirteenth multiple times to try to find another one, because the engineer did mention to me, he thought there were two.
Yeah.
I could not find a second one. The only one I found was right there at that corner of Thirteenth, which connects over to the outfall pipe.
Right.
Right there. But I didn't see another one.
Let, let me ask Kyle. Kyle? I'm sorry, could you say it one more time?
I feel like we had something sinking on the edge of the roadway, some kind of washout that we repaired. It's been, it's been holding up, but, I mean, it wasn't, the pipe itself wasn't repaired, it was more
Thank you very much. Any other council members? And then I'd like to take it for a vote. Mr. Gunn?
You know, I'm looking at Section Six of that study, and it, it talks about outdated design, outdated and undersized stormwater system. You know, if you, I think if you read through there, there's, there's, there's no real hard data about a failing infrastructure system. I mean, it's not like pipes are collapsing. We know there are some problem areas, but it's not like you have collapsing pipes, and it's an infrastructure problem. It's an outdated design, it's undersized, and it talks about you have some restrictions in the water flow. So I think chasing this, we've kind of gotten off on a tangent here. We've got to replace the system because it's at the end of its useful life. Well, I guess, hey, you know, I'm, I'm from Kansas, you got to show me it's failing. I haven't seen any of that, and all of the reports based on simulation. Nobody's ever really taken a hard look at the actual infrastructure itself. It talks about other things, you know, it talks about the flow capacities, and we know there are constraints in the outfalls. It talks about making sure you're, you're doing periodic maintenance on these things. And it also talks about, there are lack of stormwater infrastructure in some areas. So once again, I'm, I'm not convinced. We just need to do a wholesale replacement of piping and that sort of thing. I, at this point, until we can do a, a good evaluation of what is the present situation, what's the end condition, did we get better on some of these other ones? I, I'm, I'm not convinced. And I think right now, I, I would like to move forward, but I would like to re-scope the project and just pick out those things. We, we absolutely know we'd get positive results out of it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no other comments, yes, no, then I would like to go ahead and take this to a vote. Because this is a large amount of money, and it's a very important project, let's do a roll call vote, okay? So, this is to authorize the city manager to award the Twelfth and Thirteenth Street Drainage Modification Project bid, B twenty-two dash zero-one-two, I hope I get this right, Kaminga and Rude Voits
Rude Vits.
Rude Vits Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty cents, and approve a budget increase in the Stormwater Fund Capital Outlay and Capital Projects Fund in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand to complete the project. A yes vote will be to accept the bid and budget increase. A no vote will be to reject the bid and the budget increase. Patty, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sable?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Notara?
Yes.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Hey.
Mayor Gavis?
Yes. So, the, the, the yeses have it at four to two, and City Manager Reeves, you are authorized to move forward with this project. Thank you for attending, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I, I
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.